Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, Council, I don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
I'll move to approve.
I will second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Chad, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried invocation. Hunter's Ridge Community Church. Good evening.
I hope you're all doing well tonight. Let's take a moment to pray. Father God, thank you for the privilege of being able to bring this council meeting and council members before you tonight. I want to pray for Ms. Christensen and Mr. Sebastian, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Samowski, and Mr. Forseer, and Mr. Johnich, and Sabora, and Mr. Exner, who's not here, and Ms. Stark as well. You love them, Father. Thank you for them, and thank you for the time they put in to serve our community, our city. Father, may they, may we all, seek the welfare of this city and our surrounding communities. Father, give them wisdom, give them knowledge, give them understanding. May they seek godly counsel, godly advisors. Give them, and all of us, teachable hearts and spirits. Make us generous people, compassionate people for you. So bless them and all of the issues that they face tonight. And we ask your hand to be upon, and bless them. I pray this all. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution number 15000. Resolution accepting cash donation of $2,000 from the Village Ranch Incorporated for the Hutchinson Police Department.
Motion to accept that. Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave, to accept a donation from the Village Ranch. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe a question for Matt. Do we ever send out thank you cards or something? I mean, we've, people have been pretty generous.
Yeah, probably not, so.
We can start having that as a...
Put that on the budget for next year.
I think, I think we can probably afford it in this budget.
Perfect.
Thanks.
That's a good idea, Steve. I like that.
Just thought of it, you know, that you...
Just to recognize that, like you said, we have a lot of generous people in our community, so. Public comment, citizens addressing the council. Anybody want to address the council? They have approval of minutes. We have organizational meeting minutes of January 7, 2019, and the regular meeting minutes of January 8, 2019.
Motion to accept both of those.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary, to accept the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Consent agenda be done by one motion unless somebody takes, pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of resolution number 15001, amendment to the McCloud County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. B is approval of wastewater treatment facility, MBR, variegated blower replacement. C is approval of items for the Fifth Avenue South reconstruction, letting number one, project number 19-1. Under there, we have resolution 15002, resolution ordering preparation of reports on improvements. And resolution number 15003, resolution receiving reports and calling for hearings on improvements. D is approval of items for technology drive construction, letting number five, project number 19-6. Under there, we have resolution number 15004, resolution ordering preparation of report on improvements. And resolution number 15005, resolution receiving reports and calling hearing on improvements. E is reappointment of Johnny Block to the EDA to December of 2024. F is approval of resolution number 15006, resolution supporting the lease of local government increase of local government aid in 2019 legislative session. G is acquisition of a Toro ground master mower for the Parks Department. H is approval of resolution number 15007, resolution approving preliminary and final plat for bear paw addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. I is approval of resolution number 15008, resolution approving site plan for Hutchinson Health addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. J is approval of short-term gambling license to the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association on April 6, 2019, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. K is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Upper Midwest Alice Chalmers Club on July 28, 2019, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. L is claims appropriation and contract payments. Does anybody want anything pulled off?
We have some of the principles here on H and I. I just thought maybe it would be an opportunity for them to speak a little bit about, share a little bit about their projects, would you be okay with that? That would be the Bear Paw Project in Hutchinson Health?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'll pull off H and I then.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. The Bear Paw Edition?
I just saw that Roman was here and Sarah, and just thought, looks like you've been to Hutchinson Health.
We didn't mean to make you walk up there.
Yeah, you just wanted to see me walk with the cast on, that's fine. Yeah.
Name, please.
Yep, Roman Blumke, Chief Operations Officer and part owner of Woodstone Senior Living. And Sarah Work, she's our Chief Financial Officer, and also part owner of Woodstone as well. So what we're looking at doing right now with this, with this portion of it anyways, we have a, two lots that are over there. The one that our building currently sits on, and then one that's up to the north. And we're looking at combining those two with the potential that's down the road here. Hopefully, next month, we bring plans forward to do an expansion onto the property there.
So pretty much serving the same...
Yeah, a little bit different. It's going to be an active living community. So I think it's 65 and older. So it'll be heavy activities based and stuff like that. So we'll have more information next month when we come back. You know, we have a little bit more stuff for you guys, but...
Okay.
Really just talking about the combination of the two pieces right now is what we're looking at, so. Yeah.
The water to the north is landlocked, can't do much with it.
Right.
So it's going to sit bare for a long time, so it's just, put these two together so we can put this property together.
Yeah, and the idea then is that that upper, that north portion up there becomes more of a retention pond area. So helps to take care of some of the water issues over in that area, too. So should help.
Will it be more like condo-based or rental-based?
Rental-based. Yep.
But again, we'll have more on that the next time we're in front of you with the whole site plan.
Sounds great.
Yep, sounds good. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Gentlemen.
Good me to put you on the spot, but just thought it'd be here as a chance to take a little bit of what's going on out there.
Not a problem. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name's Josh Riplinger. I work for Wold Architects and Engineers, one of the healthcare planners and architects working on the project. And with me tonight's Glenn Cagley from Hutchinson Health. So we appreciate the opportunity just to give a quick overview and then certainly open it up for questions. Really, the project is focused around reorganizing and transforming the inpatient side of the hospital. And so right now, the inpatient rooms are all located kind of in the heart of the hospital. And in today's modern healthcare world, we're reorganizing healthcare around outpatient services. And so as we complete that reorganization at the hospital, we're relocating the inpatient rooms to be on the west side of the campus in an expansion that's kind of in the northwest corner of the site. And so as we reviewed with the planning commission, that's a kind of a two-story, or a second-story expansion with some parking underneath of it. And so really going to be recreating that experience for the patients since they'll have new rooms that are larger, have more amenities for family members to come and join them and partake in the healing process, and then reorganizing operations around creating a more efficient operation for both the staff and patients alike. So with that, open it up for any questions that the council may have?
I thought the pro, what's in the pack? Great way to utilize space, and just wasn't sure how it was going to be utilized, so it's nice to hear.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Candace, how quick can you be?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
I'm very quick.
Welcome, Candace. How are you?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Can't believe another year has passed. So I'm here tonight to give you a recap on what's happened at Liquor Hutch in 2018. This is a graph showing our sales since 2006, when we did our major remodel and expansion. Shows a nice, steady increase in sales. The sales at, or in 2006 were 4,458,000, and now in 2018, our sales were 6,245,000. And during those 13 years, Liquor Hutch has transferred 5,370,066 dollars to the City of Hutchinson General Fund. Looking at sales for 2018. We saw sales of 6,242,276, which is a 1.5% increase over 2017. We actually fell just short of our budget in sales. We were projected for 6,200, or 6,250,000, or 245, excuse me, 6,245,000 was our budget. So we fell short of that by $2,700, so $6.2 million, 2,700. Now, I never like to fall short of budget. It really is a problem to me. In 27 years of running municipal liquor stores, this is the first time that's ever happened, so.
You could have bought a little.
I know. You guys should have bought a little more.
I buy enough.
In the various categories, you can see that we had a 2.9% increase in liquor sales, a 1% increase in beer sales, and less than 1% increase in wine sales. A couple things that kind of were drivers of those numbers are summer beer sales were not what we had hoped. Beer sales are very weather-driven, and if you don't get the right weather on weekends or holidays, or, you know, it really does affect your numbers. Across the state, those sales are, you know, pretty flat for the year. And our wine sales, I really think we've been affected by competition in the West Metro area. We hear a lot about it from our customers, that they're shopping another big box store in that West Metro area. So, and we anticipated that competition. We knew that that competition was coming. And I have a couple ideas about that, too, as we move forward. Our customer counts are up a little less than 1%. Our average sale per customer is up a bit also, about 18 cents per customer. This is something that we're really going to put some focus on for 2019 with our staff training, so I'll go into that a little bit more. Our gross profit percentage is up a bit also. In about May of last year, when I recognized that we had had a fairly weak spring season, and if we didn't have a really strong summer, we were going to be looking at, you know, some issues with our gross profits. We began to really carefully manage those gross profits to be sure that we would increase the gross profit, even if we didn't increase our sales significantly, that we would come out with that gross profit number on the high side. So that, we did accomplish that. That was a main goal for 2018, as we recognized where our sales were headed.
And about balance, right?
It's very much a balance. It's a balance of gross profits, net profits, and sales increases. That's the whole balance. That's my whole job, really. Well, not exactly, but there's a couple other things. But that's, as far as the financial aspect of it, that's the important balancing act that we maintain.
You can't beat 25% as a...
25% is our goal each year, but as I said, because we recognized early on that sales were not really going to hit our goal, and we came really close, honestly. I was holding my breath for most of the last quarter.
We're going to send an email out next December to all council members if we're...
Yes, I think I will. That's a good plan. I don't know how I missed that. One thing to note, net profits are not yet available because all of the expenses from 2018 are not in or accounted for. But as of January 11, the expenses that were in and accounted on our budget, we were at about 97% of our budgeted expenses. We don't have a lot yet to come in, so we will come in at or just under our expenses that are as budgeted. And with our sales just short of our projection, and our expenses as projected, and our gross profit up, I'm fairly confident we're going to have a good net profit picture.
So what gets, you know, what gets reported to the state auditor, give out their report? Are we going to show, be one of those that show a loss, or will we, based on our numbers here, that $2,000 shortfall, or...
Oh, no. That shortfall is simply what we projected for sales and budgeted. The state auditor's report each year is based on our reporting for the year's sales. So they really don't even know what the projections were. We're just reporting our sales. And that state auditor's report, have to be really careful when we read it, because not every city has the same accounting practices, not everybody uses the same, you know, principles. It's really not apples to apples in that report, so sometimes it can be a little deceiving.
Well, that's where I think when you have a transfer like we do, it's a profit that possible.
Absolutely. Some cities don't really, because of the way depreciation works in an enterprise fund, some people, or some cities do not deduct depreciation, so that falls to their net profit. There's a lot of different things. Some cities don't pay for certain services, you know, that other cities pay for in their enterprise fund. It's just not apples to apples, and you have to be careful when you look at those comparisons. Also, cities that have a high volume of wine sales will have a much higher net profit. Cities that have less competition will have a higher net profit. You know, there's a lot of things, as you said, to be balanced in the overall picture, so you have to be careful looking at that state auditor's report. Let's see, our next slide. Significant expenses in 2018. We upgraded our video security system for about $31,000. We already, using that system, were able to identify two shoplifting incidents, and it's really important that we have that system for the safety of our customers and our staff. That's a very important thing. And also to support our police department, we use it. So that's $31,000 well spent. Hadn't been updated in 15 years, so it was time. We also invested in our POS inventory system. Now we have a system that will promote some of the marketing, or provide the opportunities for us to do some of the marketing that I'm going to suggest. And credit card processing continues to be one of our significant expenses. 82% of our sales now are going through on cards of various sorts, debit credit. So that's an added 1.9% on each of those transactions that we have to absorb, so another reason we need to keep those gross profits up there. Trends for 2018, and I'm going to say it again, beer sales were flat. But we did see some increases in alternative items such as the low-cal, low-carb products, beer products, and the, yes, and the seltzers, the various seltzers. That's a kind of a new thing on the market in 2018. We are seeing increases in sales due to our marketing efforts. We do a lot of two fours, three fours, that kind of marketing in the store, red tags, our AdMatch programs. Significant trend there is that those programs are being more utilized than they have been in the past. I don't know if that speaks to our economy, or just to the savvy shoppers, or the fact that, you know, they're looking for the deal because they know there's competition down the road where they could go get the deal, you know, but we're seeing more usage of those programs. And of course, the increased competition is creating a higher demand for staff training and marketing. Successful things that we've had going, our AdMatch Mondays are doing really well. We've taken a day on Monday that used to be a real quiet day, and now it's one of our busier days. Our 15% off import and craft beer on Thursdays continues to be successful. Holiday sales that we do with local advertising, annual wine sale, special seminars on spirits, and in-store tastings during high-volume times. Some of the challenges that we're facing, managing the competitive pricing while continuing to produce those needed gross profits, staff product knowledge training, and advertising, you know, exactly how we're going to reach our customers. So in managing the gross profits, that's like the daily review of exactly where that gross profit is on different items, and the focusing on bringing in items that are not necessarily competitive, not necessarily known throughout the market, so that we can achieve some higher gross profits. And staff product training, with, last year, we put in a program called, we've called it Tuesday Trainings. It's a, once a month, on the first Tuesday of each month, we're covering a category of products where we bring in a vendor to provide the information, and it's a voluntary basis so that staff members who have, or who feel comfortable with that product don't have to attend, and those who need the training can. And I, I'm happy to say, got a really great staff. So of the 22 people that work at Liquor Hutch, we'll have 17 or 18 at every training, so that's really great. In February, we're going to be building on, or focusing on building incremental sales. We're going to be doing some resetting in the store to put some focus on getting that add-on sale to increase that dollars per customer that we're gaining. So we're hoping that, well, not that we ever have you wait in line, but we're hoping that if you have to wait in line for a moment, you will now be in an area in the store that has some kind of attractive, single-serve, especially summertime, picnic-y, take-it-to-the-lake products, you know, to try to get that couple extra dollars out of your pocket.
It's like the candy aisle in the grocery store.
It's like the candy aisle in the grocery store, absolutely. And in advertising, we, a couple things that we're really focusing on, social media. Facebook and Instagram have been really great for us. We use a software called Constant Contact to do email blasts. That's been working well for us. And we have a new program that we're looking at for 2018, 19, oh, that's my fault, for We're in the process of putting together a loyalty program. So in this program, for every dollar that you would spend with us, you would get a point, and for every 500 points that you get, you would be able to redeem at the cash register some dollars back, similar to what you see in many, many retail environments, something that works well in retail environments. A couple stores specifically in the metro area that have had increased competition due to the big box store that came in, like, right into their doorstep, or right their back door, have had really great results with these loyalty programs. So we're going to give it a try. Again, another reason that we have to really manage our gross profits on some of the products, because these are basically discounts that we will be giving. But I think it's going to be a good program. We're looking forward to doing it. So some details, you'd get points for everything you purchase, from wine, beer, liquor, accessories, gift cards, event registrations. You would not get points for deposits on things or purchases paid for with a gift card. Our grapevine and pub club members that we currently have and give discounts to, they would be transitioned to this loyalty program. And then also, we'll continue to hold all the tasting events, the things that we have done in the past to promote our products. And rather than have a club membership and enter free, which you, basically, when we do the club membership, what you're paying for is our expenses involved in holding the events. So we will go to just a $10 per person entry fee at the door for those events. And at those events, there's always discounted pricing on orders at our place that night. And some of the events, we'll, we'll be able to do, you know, have some flexibility to do things, like you could get double loyalty points if you purchase tonight, some things, some incentives to purchase. So that's where we're at, at Liquor Hutch. Any questions? Anything?
How are your Sunday sales, Candace?
Sunday sales have pretty much remained the same.
They have?
We, yep, we're right around $8,000 to $9,000 every Sunday. So we're definitely covering our staff members being there. We don't, you know, we don't staff it heavily. We staff it appropriately, so we're able to cover our labor expense for the day without any problems. It's, it's been profitable for us. It has not, I would say, increased our overall sales, you know, but there, I mean, we didn't really have any choice but to do, you know, react to the market and be open on Sundays, so.
Could you see a falloff in one of the other days then, or not?
We haven't, we really have not. You know, it's just little bits here and there. There's not, like, Monday's still a great day because of our AdMatch program, you know? Tuesday's good, Wednesday's good. I, you know, I really can't say that we have one day that isn't worthwhile, or even one hour. It's, I mean, we're always looking at... I mean, we're always looking at sales per hour to determine, maybe we should be opening at nine instead of eight to, you know, save the labor expense. Or maybe we should be closing at nine instead of 10 to save labor expense. But the sales are there throughout the hours, throughout the day, so.
From the gross profit side, sales is one piece of it, but, you know, purchase prices that we're buying stuff from, I can't remember if I've ever asked this, is there an opportunity to work with other stores?
There are opportunities to work with other municipal liquor stores. The thing that happens for us is that at our sales volume, we're already being offered what would be considered the top deal, the best price. So those purchasing consortiums are really beneficial to the smaller stores. It's a great thing for the smaller stores. It allows them to be more competitive. But for us, we're already at a volume where, and we have the storage space due to our expansion, where we can bring in those big deals and we can, you know, benefit from those, that pricing, so. Yeah, we work the pricing pretty hard. Spend a lot of time on that. Yes. Any other questions? Did I do it?
And then just a reminder that, from the financial side of it too, that the debt is paid off in 2020.
2020.
So 2021, that'll all be gone, right?
Our net profit will really pop up in 2021. Looking forward to that. So we like those good numbers. Thank you.
Thanks, Candace.
Thank you.
Yep. Small cities development program rental rehab application. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to be talking about...
Jean.
Yes.
You know the drill. Got to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Jean Ward, Director from the HRA. So...
And who's the young lady you have with you?
And this is Judy Fleming, the Program Coordinator, and she's going to be giving part of the presentation tonight, so...
Thank you.
So we're going to start off with our presentation here. We'll go back here. So tonight, where this started was in 2018. We worked really hard in identifying a project for rental rehab, a small cities project after we completed the downtown rental rehab program. And with that came, in 2018, a preliminary proposal to DED, and they accepted our proposal so that we would go forth with a full application. And as part of the full application, we are required to do a public hearing. So tonight in the public hearing, we're going to discuss citizen input, ask for citizen input, your input on housing needs of Hutchinson. We're going to talk about the Southdale Apartment Rental Rehab Proposed Application. We're going to talk about the costs and project financing, the implementation schedule, how we've performed in the past with small cities, and the historic requirements that small cities has. So we'll start with Hutchinson Housing Needs. We all know that we're regional, we're a regional center, and with that, we have the majority of, or actually about half of the rental units from McLeod County here in Hutchinson. What we found here last August is that there was a vacancy rate of 2.76%. The recommended goal is 5% to allow for unit turnover and consumer choice, and that was after adding two buildings of Highfield. So those were 54 units that we added. So those filled up rather quickly. Our non-market rate general occupancy vacancy is 2.38%. That recommendation is 3%. HUD doesn't like to see vacant units, so they like a lower vacancy rate. Last year, we were trying to get a feel for where we were at as far as employees coming onboard in the next few years, and what that meant for our housing market. Did it mean more homeownership? Did it mean more rental? And what we found in our employer's survey is that we're having quite a few job openings, especially with 3M retirements coming onboard, because they're projecting 250 job openings within the next three years, and they're paying $16 to $20 an hour. So at 40 hours a week, that means about $33,280 to $41,600 per year. Everyone talks about affordable housing, and what is this affordable housing definition? And really, it's defined as 30% of someone's gross income per month should go to rent or a housing payment. And so at that, it would be, it would mean $832 per month to $1,040 per month. At that yearly income would be affordable. We also, other employers were projecting 60 job openings within the next three years, ranging at a high or lower job rate of 10 to 1378 per hour. And so that at 40 hours per week would mean $20,800 to $28,662 per year. And that correlates to affordable rents ranging from $520 to $717 per month. We also examined the results of the survey to find out that most, 68% of the employees actually live in Hutchinson. The rest commute in. So that lent us to determine that, or project 210 additional rental units would be needed over the next three years, and 36 owner-occupied new construction over the next three years. So those numbers came from workforce numbers only and from the new employees that we expect to see within the next three years. One thing that really has changed is the demographics and the market with the millennials. It's really after the Great Recession, change from owner-occupied to rental housing in Hutchinson. Many millennials right now, and Mary, you can probably speak to this, are looking to rent instead of being encumbered by homeownership. And we'll have to see how it plays out, because if there are millennial households who start families and actually determine that Hutchinson is going to be their home for a number of years, they might look at homeownership in a different light. So that remains to be seen. We'll see how that plays out. But we felt that rehab of multifamily with the demand in the rental housing is really important to preserve the rental housing that we have and also improve, continue to improve our neighborhoods. The programs that we have in Hutchinson really focus on, the first one is focusing on rehab. And so outside of this application, we still have our Single Family Owner Occupied Rehab Program. And if people are interested in that, they can go online to our website and find out about that program. It's a very, very user-friendly program, and we have, we have a full-service program where we do inspections and work write-ups and everything to streamline the application where they just bring in some bids. So it works for different situations. We continue to look at Park Towers as a housing asset for very low-income people and low-income people in the community, and continue to improve that with both state and federal funds. And then we have the recently completed 2017 Small Cities Downtown Rental Rehab Project. We talked already about the TIF program at Highfield Apartments, and just wanted to remind people that according to TIF regulations, 20% of those units have to be income-restricted. So therefore, the lower-income people, 20% of those units are occupied by lower-income people. And then I'll just talk about owner-occupied housing, the last point. The HRA has been approved for 2019 affordability gap for first-time home buyers for new construction of five detached starter homes affordable to our workforce. We're going to have $40,000 in 0% affordability gap funds for our workforce. And we're going to roll out this program. We just signed the contract in April, or it's, we just signed the contract. It'll be starting in April, so we'll roll that out. We'll put something in the newspaper. We'll put it on our website and on Facebook. So if anyone's looking for a house and are first-time home buyers, it'll be a really good opportunity for them.
They pick a lot, or is that...
They will work with a builder. We have three builders that are working with our program, and they will work directly with the builder. We'll just be on the end with the financing. So it will be the builders and the realtors, the lenders. We have two lenders in town right now. And then when they're approved for their home and know that they can get a mortgage and they are eligible for affordability gap, then we'll come in with the gap financing at closing. And it's really what we did at Rolling Meadows. We probably, Rolling Meadows had, in the first development, 80 units, and half of them were probably with affordability gap. The difference is, back then, we had such a major job expansion at HTI. And that really precipitated the need for a new subdivision. So right now, we have adequate lots, and we have builders, but their work crews are limited, and so they're limited in what they can build. So why is the HRA recommending 907 Dale Street as a Small Cities Rehab Project application? And the reason is, we want to preserve our rental housing because of the low vacancy rate. Secondly, 907 Dale Street Apartments, our Southdale Apartments, are over 40 years old and really haven't had any, had only had limited repairs since 1974 when they were built. And so they're substandard and in need of repair. These apartments are what are called NOAA projects. I don't know if any of you know what a NOAA project is. It's naturally occurring affordable housing. It's a project with unsubsidized affordable rents. So those older buildings are really important to have for our lower-income people because if they no longer exist, it's really going to decrease our inventory for affordable housing. In addition, 907 Dale Street Apartments has a worn, substandard visual presence. So, you know, that's a very busy intersection. Every time you go by, you're going to see an improvement there. Also, this project is very cost-effective. If you plan to conserve this rental housing at a cost of $11,744 per unit, and that's our total small cities request, compare that to replacement new construction at $100,000 to $200,000. You can see, it's just a project that we need to do.
So Jean, on the project on 907 Dale Street, what are they doing inside the building?
Well, right now, I'm going to have Judy talk about the specific details of the project, and then she'll explain all that to you, because she's been working with the owner and actually has gotten a physical needs assessment of the building on what needs to be done. So she'll talk to you about that. So with that is Judy.
Good evening. So here is a refresher. Here is our proposed Small Cities Rental Rehab at 907 Dale, which you know is at the corner of Dale and South Grade, and Christ the King is across the street. So one of the requirements of the funding that we're applying for is that 51% of the units must be occupied by an income-qualified household, and then the rents also have to be affordable for McLeod County, which we have stated here. The income is adjusted for household size, and then this is the rents. The affordable rents are called fair market rents that HUD comes out with. And just so you know, during the period, once it's rehabbed, we call it the compliance period, and that's five years, they are not supposed to increase the rents, the owners. So 907 Dale Street is, does have the 51% income and rent-qualified tenants. And we just thought we'd show you what we've seen there. So they've given me their rent rolls. And the studio apartments are going for $425 a month. And just so you know, the affordable, so $17,000 is what a household yearly income would be for that. The one-bedroom is $480 to $499, and that's affordable to a household with a yearly income of the $19,200 to $19,960. The two-bedrooms are going for a range of $550 to $725. The reason why there's ranges is because some of them have additional bathrooms, some of them, the tenants have been there before the current owner, and so they didn't change the rents. So it's kind of nice to know that. And then they haven't changed a lot on the rents for the current tenants. And the last one, the three-bedroom, is the $750, and you can see what annual household income is needed for that. So the Small Cities has a deferred loan, and that can be up to 70% of the rehab costs. And there's a maximum of that 70%. It is $12,500 per unit. So the example is showing the maximums. The construction cost for a 40-unit, which is what Dale Street is, is $714,286. So 70% of that, or the Small Cities/program income, would be the $500,000. And then the remainder, the 30%, is the owner match. So the overall costs and project financing. So I'm going to start at the back here with the total, and that first line is the rehab construction cost. It's going backwards from the previous slide. So the total cost, which we came up with, was the $714,286. You take the 30% is the owner match, which is coming from a loan through Greater Minnesota Housing Fund who we have worked with before, and it is a loan that's got interest. And then the owner is contributing some of their own funds. And now the $500,000, the 70%, is coming from part of the Small Cities that we're applying for, which is the 408-497. And this last piece here is called program income. Program income is money that the city has gotten repaid from previous Small Cities grants that we've had. So they're repayments. And DED does not want that to be sitting around, so they want that used right away. So that's why we have that as part of our application.
That's loan repayments, or...
Yes, loan repayments. A lot of ours are if they sell, a lot of the loans are if they sell before a certain time period, they have to pay back part of it. Some of them were deferred loans where they had to pay once they sold. Yep, things like that. The second line is the admin. They allow us to take 15% of the project cost. So that's where this is. So the total Small Cities request with the... So the total small cities request with the rehab and the admin is the four sixty-nine, seven fifty-one. We're contributing our repayment, our PI, of the one oh five, two forty-nine. The owner is getting a loan plus his own personal funds of the two, two hundred and fourteen, two eighty-six. So the total overall cost of financing is the seven eighty-nine, two eighty-six. And Mary, I'm finally getting to your question. So, our, when we talked to our deed rep, he wanted us to say what the deed money was going to be touching, so that's why it's kind of set out this way. So, they want building first, so the windows are a major thing right now. Of course, as everybody saw in the picture, the siding stucco repair, and he has mechanical HVAC that are old, so we'd like that. As people see when you drive by, there's a definitely parking lot issue, so that needs to be repaired, and we can kind of, it also involves the drainage then, because it's going into some of the units. So I've kind of left it, kind of broad here for what's happening inside, but we'll be going through each unit and coming up with a list of things. But the things that she did see were some health and safety issues, but they've been trying to do a lot of it at turns too, so she didn't have a lot of things other than there's old cabinets, flooring, the big thing, which this bottom line is, is their appliances are very old. So, we did talk with deed, and so the seventy, thirty, the thirty part, that fund can, it's part of the project, that can go towards the appliances. So that made the owner very happy.
Is the utility rebate program available for something like that?
You know, they have worked with us before, so I, I think that we definitely would talk to, I think it's still Nick, isn't it, out there? Yeah. I think we'd, we'd definitely talk with him. The more, the merrier involved. So...
How about, can I ask one question?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see the roof on there, that must be in good shape, or there's...
There is a piece that she does have. One of it was redone a couple of years ago, but the flat roofs, she, the, the conditions report lady put on there that it could be. So if we have enough funds, that would be one of our priorities too. Good question.
And they're just going to repair the stucco that's on the building?
I don't want that, but I really want vinyl. And the quote that the physical needs assessment lady gave me was really a lot, but the owner is definitely for that. He wants maintenance free too. So, what, what a lot of times we do, because we don't know all the additional costs when you have Davis Bacon and wage rates that you ha, you don't know about, we put in ads to the project, so that's definitely going to be on one of my ad sections of the scope of work. So I'm hoping that we can get that done too. That is one of my big hopes.
Judy, explain Davis Bacon for people that don't know.
It's just a wage rate that the government, which depending on the funding source, this one is federal, it's a federal pay rate that they have, you follow for projects where it's eight or more units. And it's, it's updated. It hasn't been a big issue, because we're close enough to Metro and the unions come out here now, so it hasn't been too big of an issue, but you never know with how busy contractors are. Implementation schedule. So, this application is due to deed on the end of February. They typically let us know in June if we've been funded, and then from there on, we work on lots of paperwork. So June and July, it's executing contracts and doing the checklist that they have. I'll be doing an environmental review that, process that we go through to get a clearance. Once we get the okay from deed to move forward, then we start sending out notices to the tenants, so they know that there's a project going on, that it's been approved. We'll work on doing the inspections of each of the units and coming up with a work write-up slash bid packet. So I'm hoping that in September, the bidding will begin, September, October, so it's kind of a, the contractors looking for winter, spring work for us, so hopefully we'll get some good numbers on that. So I'm hoping that possibly the construction could start February twenty twenty. One of the requirements of the funding from deed is you have to have another mid-grant public hearing, so in April twenty twenty, we'll be coming back to you and hopefully giving you an update. And the last one, the project closeout. So deed, their fiscal year ends September thirtieth, and so my goal would be for us to have the project all done by September twenty twenty. However, usually the contracts go to the end of the year, so if paperwork takes a little bit longer sometimes to close out, then we have to the end of the year. They want us to talk about our staff, agency and staff experience. The Hutchinson HRA has over twenty-nine years of experience in administering these different types of programs, small cities, Minnesota housing, Greater Minnesota housing funds. We're a small agency, as you know, so I'll be doing most of the, the paperwork. I'm really good at paperwork. And I've been here forever too. So, and then the other really wonderful thing is, we work with the Hutchinson Building Department, so then that streamlines so much when it works with the contractors, when we're working together like this. It's a wonderful partnership, so I get to work with Kyle on these projects. Compliance with historic requirements. I did look at the National Register of Historic Places, and Southdale, nine oh seven Dale Street is not on there right now.
Didn't make the cut.
But we will be doing, for the environmental review, I do have to send out letters, so they will be part of the review process, the state and the county historical societies. Questions or comments?
It's a good program, and that building needs a little tender care.
Judy, I know, one thing, when we had our HRA meeting, the, the one comment that came up was, is people going to be misplaced when they're doing the construction?
Well, as you can see, most of it, we're hoping for outside, so it shouldn't, people shouldn't have to be moved around, but if there is something, a lot of times, the owners keep one unit available, and then they can transfer them in and out. If, once we get the HQS inspection done, and we have to find out if, we have to do intensive stuff inside a unit, there could be a relocation plan in building, nothing outside, but it's all within the building.
Another thing, oh, can you talk about the Work and Hutch, and you had one of those come through for a loan?
So, one of the programs that we implemented was called Live and Work in Hutchinson, is that the one that you...
Yes.
Okay. So, this was pre our down payment assistance programs. So, this one was, we had rehab funds, and so you know, when you buy a new house, you always come up with something that you'd like to change, one little thing or something. So, we came up with, for first time home buyers buying their first home, a program to help them fix up their house just a little bit. And we did have one, a, a single, single lady that works at three M, just bought her first time, first house, and she needed her bathroom updated, the old tile, you know, so we helped her with fixing up her, her bathroom. It was a good deal.
How did she hear about the program?
She heard it through a, a past person that used one of our rehab programs.
Okay. Yeah, it's always interesting to know, how, how do you get the word out? Because you got a lot of great programs.
It is so hard, but word of mouth seems to be one of my best marketing tools.
I know Judy has reached out to all the real estate people to, when people are buying that, to say that that program's available to them.
We put stuff like that on our Facebook page, and get that out too, yeah.
Open it up for public comment?
So, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I have a question. Morgan Baum, nine twenty-five Second Avenue, Southwest Hutchinson, and I came to the workshop in June of two thousand eighteen, and I think you guys are doing really great work, but I continue to have concerns about the survey that you did of local employers, because not a lot of employers completed the survey. Upennor didn't, if I recall correctly. And at the June workshop, you had mentioned that you were going to consider doing a citizen survey for housing needs, and I was wondering if there was any update on potentially doing a citizen survey? For example, I know you didn't ask small businesses, you had a list of larger businesses, and it was sent out and not, I, I don't remember the to, the exact number of people that didn't respond, but it was primarily based on the three M responses, and small businesses, I don't believe were included?
I think we had a list of businesses from the EDA manufacturers mainly, although we did send to Walmart and some of the bigger box stores. What we found is that we reached out to Upennor and several times, and they just told us that even though they were going to have new employees, that they did not feel that they needed any additional housing for those employers or employees, so that was their response, that no additional housing was needed. It's not that they didn't respond to the survey to tell us, I'm not going to respond, they just said that they didn't need any additional housing.
And has there been any movement on a citizen survey?
Citizen survey is planning to go out in two thousand nineteen. Now, if the council wants to add a question regarding housing, that would be an opportunity for, we've done that, we did, last time we did regarding the Lakes River Basin, there was like three questions that we had added, so that would be the opportunity for, at that time, if the council were to, to have it. One thing too, we have to remember the survey is, we're trying to get a big snapshot. And, I mean, I guess if you want to, you could try to send it to every single business, but it's really that snapshot time. But the answer question, the citizen survey is going to go out in two thousand nineteen.
Well, I hope the council will consider a housing question on the survey, as well as a childcare question on the survey.
We did have a, on your last survey, there were at least one or two housing questions at the last survey. I do recall that, yes.
And then on this particular project, one quick question, did, did you say that they can't raise rents for five years, or that ideally they won't raise rents?
They can't raise rents.
Okay, so that's part of the contract? They have to keep those rents at today's rate, or at the twenty twenty?
At the time of application and contract, yep.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Any other comment?
Just need you to consider the resolution then, to submit the application?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, pardon me.
Motion, we have a sec?
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Motion for the resolution.
I'll make a motion for the resolution to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve resolution number one five zero zero nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried.
Thank you.
Just some great work, you know, and Matt gave the truth and taxation hearing. I hope the person that asked at the hearing, what does the HRA do, I hope they're watching tonight, to give them a, this is a great example, a lot of good work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, Andy, you got a big, big follow-up for us, huh?
Good evening, council, mayor, here tonight to give you a pretty snapshot review. I'm Andy Cosec, compost manager, Creekside Soils.
Thank you.
Here to give you a snapshot review, report of the happenings out at Creekside within the compost and refuse fund, so, just to dive right into it, we'll start with the refuse fund.
Andy, there was a comment on social media that nobody knows what a refuse fund is, and how we should change the names of our funds, so, if you want to explain maybe what the refuge fund is?
Really?
I think refuge sounds pretty good.
I wish I had a camera, I, I'll have to get that.
I didn't know if you were joking, I guess I, you've seen that, so it kind of caught me off guard.
So refuge is essentially a garbage fund?
Correct. Right, the refuse fund takes care of the organics collection that comes out to us, the operational costs, in terms of processing it, and then the MSW collection, tip fees at the landfill, hauling contract, and really, that's about it. Pretty, I mean, a little more involved than that, but...
Municipal solid waste, MSW, right?
What's that?
MSW is...
MSW is the garbage, with the garbage what you would send out of the...
Municipal solid waste.
Oh, what it stands for, yes. Municipal solid waste.
But, yeah. Short part is the garbage, right?
Yes. Good to know that. So, it, within the refuse fund, really the only thing to quote unquote benchmark is the materials that we receive, and those materials are the source separated organics collected from the Creekside Collection Program throughout the city of Hutch. So, typically, I've just done a year or two snapshot of our tonnages over the years, but, you know, with recent conversations on what we're looking at, potentially doing, or just initiating the conversation on the processing of the source separated material, I wanted to give a little, little bigger picture of, of what we've been seeing. Obviously, the, the top line is the incoming residential tons, it's the, the material that's being generated by the residents of Hutch, and ultimately tipped at the facility. So, going back to two thousand nine is where we started, prior to that, we were rather stable, actually a little higher, but a couple notables within these last ten years is in two thousand ten, the fall of two thousand ten was the start of the leaf vacuuming program, and you can see a slight decline in a few years after, a little tick up in thirteen, but overall, generally speaking, a decline, till you get to twenty fifteen, and then twenty fifteen, in May of twenty fifteen, single source recycling was basically fired up, the program is implemented by the county, and since then, we've seen a pretty steady decline in the tonnages, tonnages we received. So since, since two thousand nine, the two thousand ninety-one tons received to twenty eighteen, fifteen twenty, fifteen twelve, you know, we're just north of twenty-five percent reduction in, in the materials, in the source separated received at the facility. So, you know, in, in some of the budget workshops, what that means in terms of the capital expenditures coming up, the cost per ton significantly increases, so we're putting, as far as what these expenditures are costing us, so we do have quite a bit of data to start putting scenarios together, and that's something that me and Andy Reid will work on here in the beginning part of the year, and, and probably call a workshop or two to, to really start to get into the details of where we want to go with this program. Down on the bottom, aside from the, the roller coaster ride in the early years, nine, ten, eleven, the residual tons, which is the reject material we screen out of the processed source separated organics, has, has relatively stabilized. For the most part, we generally speak, generally speaking, we stay in that low teens percentage in terms of recovery rate, meaning twelve, for example, I guess it's twenty eighteen, we came in at thirteen percent. Thirteen percent of the tons received were ultimately sent to the landfill as rejects. Back in twenty seventeen, fourteen point two percent, twenty sixteen was fourteen point six percent. So those are, I mean, they're definitely acceptable numbers, ideally, we'd like to see zero, is that realistic? No, probably not, but we'd like to see it, get down into that five, ten percent range. The materials on the backside of this, which has been topic of conversation in the last few years, the, the finished compost, back in as recent as twenty fifteen... Back in as recent as twenty fifteen, I believe maybe even into twenty sixteen, we were taking this finished compost and blending it in with other products and ultimately packaging them, sending them out for, for retail. We started to get a handful of complaints with some pretty, lack of better words, gnarly inert material being found in these bags. So we basically put a stop sale on it and the material's been just accumulating on site. There's been some internal use from some of the other departments in the city. But we do have some, some potential outlets, min dot grade two material. This does qualify for that. So as those jobs, those contracts become available here in the next couple of years, you know, as time goes on, we'll certainly do what we can to, to blend that material in with the yard waste organics.
So would the county be able to use that? You say min dot, so the county is-
If they have projects that require min dot grade two spec compost, absolutely. That's, that grade two spec is more or less the general requirement. I mean, you see that in a handful of private jobs, but obviously more so on DOT jobs, of course.
Are they aware that we have that available to county?
We would, yes, yep. To anybody, anybody requiring admin grade two. Somewhat of a little fun fact here on the, down in the right hand corner there. Since two thousand one, thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty tons of source separated organics has been dumped, tipped, and ultimately processed at the landfill. And to kind of put that into somewhat perspective, that's fifteen hundred and forty semi-loads that have been ultimately the, ultimately kept out of the landfills since two thousand one. So sliding over into Creekside, into the compost fund, which takes care of all the bag sales, the yard waste processing, wood, mulch, bagging production sales. Looking at twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, we closed out with one point, one million three hundred and seventy-two thousand bags sold, up one hundred and ten thousand from twenty seventeen. Certainly an increase that we weren't anticipating. We didn't budget it early in the year. Early in twenty eighteen, after budgets were approved, we had a, a customer essentially come to us and ask if, if we would be interested in increasing our sales. Obviously, the question or answer is yes. Caught us a little off guard, but that, that sales accounted for, and I'll touch on it here in a little, in a few slides, but ultimately accounted for four hundred thousand dollars in additional sales for twenty eighteen. Leading into it, it was, we were rather skeptical if we were going to be able to meet the demand, that short of notice, but we're glad that we did. As we all know, April was a less than ideal weather month with some major snow events. The latest one being April fifteenth. Season was looking pretty bleak, I can, as mentioned. You know, earlier in the year, she was squirming a little bit. Well, we, we certainly were. But with the addition of that, that additional sales, it certainly paid dividends on, on the, on the sales side of things. So to put that in perspective, the one point three million bags sold, we packaged forty-two thousand three hundred and two yards of material. Seventeen thousand yards of that is mulch products with the remaining twenty-five thousand yards being compost materials, sands, peats that we truck in from northern Minnesota, composted manure, and then a couple other smaller ones. So onsite, we have the ability or the space to process approximately twelve, thirteen thousand yards of compost. There are the additional, you know, upwards of ten thousand yards is purchased from outside sources. Processed, screened, delivered, ready to bag. So there's really essentially no operating cost behind it. Just a breakdown of our bag sales, rather stable from, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, we're showing, you know, the nine hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine bags sold of the Creekside Brands. The Creekside Brands consist of Splendor Girl, Creekside, and Wonder Blend. Obviously, we gained some, gained business last year with the additional mulch business. But the bigger, I guess, more important piece of this is if you remember refuse back in twenty fifteen, this chart was basically flip-flopped. Our private label consumed sixty-some percent, basically two-thirds of our production, two-thirds of our sales, and the Creekside Brands was only approximately a third. So unfortunately, that private label business was a lot of big box, low margin. So we made the decision to pursue the low model, excuse me, the low production model. And so far, it's been paying off. Private labels consist of Bachmann's, Gertens, some, some of Garrick, and then a handful of other, other small accounts that we do, do some packaging for, so. That's it on that. A few highlights from the department in twenty eighteen. As mentioned, bag sales exceeded projections, more so because of the one mulch customer based out of the metro area. Bulk sales also exceeded projections. That was primarily attributed to the bitcon sales. For a good thing, but for whatever reason, it was phenomenal in terms of sales. Our typical crushing cycle is every other year, we generate enough inbound material, we crush, and that usually generates enough inventory, sellable inventory for us. For whatever reason, we crushed in the fall of twenty seventeen, and by September of twenty eighteen, that pile was gone. I believe we crushed twenty-five thousand tons. So it, it certainly moved like hotcakes. We did have contractor in this last fall, fall of eighteen here, and we crushed thirty thousand tons. So it'd be a good thing if thirty thousand tons disappeared, but I'd be surprised at the same time. But hopefully that, that trend continues. We were selected to host a Minnesota Green Corps member. That member's main objective is within the refuse fund and primarily focusing on the education, residential education of minimizing contamination within the source separated organic material. We also hosted an open house event in September. We had, I believe, right around fifty people attend, so a little less than desirable. But nonetheless, had the open house. We'll look at certainly doing one again in the future. And then another big notable for us, I guess internally, is the redesign of the Splendor Girl logo and bags. The, the image on the left here is the new design versus the old design. The old design, I'm not even sure when they rolled out. It was early two thousands with some, a few minor modifications along the way. It was, it was certainly well overdue. So the biggest thing behind this is obviously make it a little more up-to-date looking, a little more appealing. But from a cost savings approach, the, the old design was what they call in the print industry, a seven-color design, whereas the new design is a four-color design. So every color that we can save, saves us money on the, on the front side. So we'll be looking at doing the Wonder Blend bag design this year. And then we did Creekside here a handful of years ago, but that'll be coming up in future years. And then on to budget comparisons or financials. This slide here is updated from what was submitted in the packet. Andy Reid had, had some updated figures for me, so I updated them here. So if there's any questions, by all means. Starting with refuse, twenty eighteen closed out three point six percent higher in revenues at one point two five three million dollars. Year-end expenditures for twenty eighteen came in at one point two five two million with a net revenue of five eighty-six. I will note that the, the year-end expenditures do include the depreciation, the capital, the transfers, a, an all-in, all-in report, so to say. So we did see a decrease in seventeen of our net revenue of just shy of fifty thousand dollar, oh, sorry, I was budget, budgeted a loss of just shy of fifty thousand dollars, but a difference from seventeen to eighteen of, you know, sixty-nine thousand dollars and change. That's, a lot of that is primarily due to the capital expenditure we had in eighteen with nothing in seventeen. And then I believe, if I recall correctly, Mr. Reid was saying some of our hauling service, contracted services are, are coming in a little higher than, than anticipated in previous years. So outside of that, the fund is, you know, relatively stable, has been for years. Average rates have been flat since two thousand eight, I believe. Transfer has been in place since two thousand ten at fifty-five thousand dollars going into the tree disease infestation mitigation fund. And since that, two thousand ten, four hundred and ninety-five thousand has been contributed. Compost fund, compost fund budget was blown out of the water. Obviously, you can see in twenty eighteen, we budgeted just over two point one million, and we came in just shy of two point six. Again, going back to that mulch customer providing well over four hundred, or not well, but essentially a, a four hundred thousand dollars of that. Year-end expenditures came in just over two point six million. That was an updated number here prior from what I had in previously. So right now, as of today, essentially, we're showing a net, net loss of fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty-six, up from a loss of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars last year. And again, the, the biggest difference between that and, and those figures is the, the capital expenditures. Capital outlay this year was a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, whereas last year was four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to purchase the new, the new grinder, which was essentially financed. So to be able to compare apples to apples, we threw it back in as a capital expenditure. Transfer, transfer out a hundred and ten thousand dollar. Transfer to the general fund has been stable for the last several years. And since two thousand nine, just shy of nine hundred and seven thousand dollars has been transferred to the general fund. Any questions?
Always talk about cash flow and, you know, versus net revenue and we have depreciation shown and, uh, so, I mean, cash flowing, we're doing all right, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and I apologize, I kind of jumped, I jumped over the gross profit, profit margin on the compost fund. We had budgeted thirty-four point three percent for twenty eighteen. We ultimately came in at thirty-one point six, down from thirty-three point three last year. Not necessarily a good explanation for that, other than that additional business, the mulch is more involved, more equipment, more processing. Obviously, have a little higher cost of goods. So that's something we'll certainly keep an eye on moving forward. We certainly don't want to get into a situation like we were, you know, a handful of years ago with, with the higher production model. That was the, the main reason we got out of it. And like, and like Candace, the, the net profit percentage, you know, it's, we, we have a number. Is it an accurate number here today? It's accurate for today, but will change, you know, as, as time goes on. Financial code expenses back to twenty eighteen, I believe, through the end of February. So I think either, we could certainly look at moving these reports back if that's, if that's something, you know, moving them into February, into February, early March, or, or just get some, some reports submitted around that time. I can certainly talk to Andy Reid about that.
Think in the future, you know, that it'd help. Like here, it looks like, oh, we lost fourteen thousand dollars. And then it's kind of confusing with the gross profit. It's thirty-one percent, but yet we're showing a negative. So maybe something there. But then again, that cash flow just reaffirm that, like we do with the budget, we talk about that all the time. And that might be helpful for viewers, so.
Appreciation, which obviously isn't the cash flow.
Yeah. But just for the viewer's standpoint, you know, that the fund is doing well and it's healthy and taxpayer money isn't going into it. It's, it's all within the operation, so.
Yeah, no, that's something we could certainly work on. I know last year you had mentioned, and I believe it was with regards to gross, gross profit, asked about including that because it hadn't been in there in the years past, and maybe you were even asking for net. So I apologize if we put the wrong one in, but.
Andy, how about a coitment wise, you doing all right?
For the most part, yes. We have here-
If we approve this.
Yeah, that, that'll be good. So, yeah, we have an, an item here.
Yeah, I've seen that, but otherwise, you're-
Overall, fairly decent. It is, as time goes on, the business grows. You know, wheel loaders, that's probably the one of the bigger, I'm, I'm not just going to say that we'll be coming here next year and coming to fleet to, to add a wheel loader, but we do struggle. You know, we're adding an additional operator this year. Well, what good is the extra operator if you don't have the equipment for him to run? And there won't be that type of a situation, but that, that would probably be the, the next, the next thing in line. As far as, you know, bagging equipment, yeah, it's, it's seen its day, you know. But it's the, the unique thing about that is there's oodles of subsystems. It's many replaceable parts. It's not like, okay, the machine is junk. I need a new one at a million dollars today. You know, we just keep, keep up with our preventive maintenance and react accordingly when, when things happen. So overall, things, things are, things are good. I guess I can't, can't say otherwise.
Has the Green Corps member gone to that conference or that's coming up here?
He leaves on Sunday, this coming Sunday.
But, and that's an opportunity to look at some equipment too, some new things.
Yep, and that's, and that's an annual conference, like you said, back on that. That council meeting has been several years, but that's something that'll definitely get put on the forefront to try to attend here coming up.
Anything else for Andy?
Another good year.
Thank you.
Keep plugging away. I like that. Thanks, Andy. Move on to unfinished business, review of ordinance number eighteen dash seven ninety-three. Ordinance amending and replacing chapter ninety-five, public parks.
Mayor and council may recall, we first looked at this back in November of last year. And this actually even dated back to, I think, some of the discussions that we had in the spring of eighteen regarding just some of the requests that we were getting for renting out the shelter. And, and so at that time, we took kind of a holistic approach at, at looking at our park, parks ordinance, which was quite out, I wouldn't say it was outdated, just it didn't have a lot of details. And, and a lot of what we were doing for practice, which was great, just wasn't on paper. And so we wanted to make sure that we got it paper, that we got it on paper. So at the last meeting, you reviewed it, there, when you reviewed the ordinance, there was kind of four items that were kind of raised as, I guess, a question from the council at that time that you asked the parks, the park board to take a, a further look at. One of those had to, to deal with exempting trails and sidewalks and the definition of parks. There was some concern at that time about, you know, people using specifically Library Square and then the loose line trail and some other trails regarding that. There was also a, a question raised by the council about Tartan Park and why that was the only park called out in the ordinance dealing with tobacco-free. And so the park board looked at that. There was some language regarding, I think, glass bottles and whether or not we, we should have that, I guess, in the ordinance. I think there's a couple other just minor, you know, technical things. And so, you know, Dolph's here too, if you have any questions for him. And obviously Chad is the, the park board rep. But the parks, park board did look at it and did recommend a, a couple changes. I think regarding the, the items relating to the use of trails, they had tried to address that in section ninety-five point oh-three. If you're looking at your ordinance, those have been highlighted in, in red, the changes regarding, um, the tobacco-free parks. I, I think the recommendation from the park board was it'd be their desire to see that all the parks are tobacco-free and not just one. And then they did, they, they really didn't have a problem with taking out the, the glass receptacles in the parks. You know, at this point, and it hasn't been an issue or a problem for them. And so they felt, you know, there wasn't issue, there wasn't a problem, I guess, with, with removing that. And then there was one other minor language change, just to make sure that it was clarified and, and in there. And so that was the use of amplified instruments music. That's under ninety-five point oh-four, section four. So those were kind of the four changes since the, the first time you, you looked at it. Obviously, wanted to bring it in front of you tonight to, I guess, ask any questions, get any feedback. If there's anything else that wants to be changed, I guess, to, to let me know because then the plan would be to put it on a future council agenda for first and second reading and then potential adoption, so.
I have one thing that I think we need to discuss, the tobacco-free parks. I'm, I'm not a smoker, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm just not okay with telling a veteran who has served our country that he can't go sit in his veterans' park and have a cigarette or a vape. You know, that, that doesn't sit well with me. And, and who's going to be monitoring this? Who's going to be watching and saying, you can't have that cigarette in this park? I mean, I think it's really hard to enforce that.
Well, I think it would be like a lot of laws that they're not really, like, on the offensive with enforcement, if that makes sense.
If it doesn't require enforcement, why do it?
Well, I'd say most laws are like that, you know, I mean, at the end of the day.
I side with Mary somewhat on that. I, I just think it, uh, restricts, if you're gonna say that, it restricts a, an individual. And if you want to talk about First Amendment rights, First Amendment rights covers everyone. So whose rights are you basically, uh, not adhering to? Person that does smoke and the person that doesn't smoke. So typically, I, I, I side with Mary. I think Veterans Park, I'm not sure it's, uh, if it's not enforceable, uh, I think it's wishful thinking. So, uh, I would not go along with Veterans Park.
There's actually a number, I think there's over nine hundred communities across the country that have smoke-free parks and other ones in Minneapolis. And, um, I think there's health issues with that. Believe it or not, even though you're outside, there's litter problems with it. And then I think it's just the whole perception, even with the electronic cigarettes, that, you're almost condoning it, and we're trying to set an example, especially for our youth. And there's one organization specifically that really works on the, this type of a project. I don't see it as being anything different than, uh, some of the other smoking regulations that are out there. So it's like, um, a veteran can go into the VFW and smoke, right? You have to go outside, so, just like everybody else, so.
But their park is outside too.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, but, um, other people can use it too, so.
I just wanna, just make sure we're clear, we're talking about Veterans Memorial Field, where we play baseball, and the adjacent parking lot, not Veterans Park of McLeod County. Just wanna make sure everybody's clear about that.
That was the original.
That was the original.
But now it says all parks.
Yes.
Right, and that's what the park board's suggesting, and part of the reason they're doing that is because they're sensitive to the age brackets that play down at that facility. It isn't all adults at Veterans Memorial Field. Quite frankly, it's, we have one amateur baseball team, and then we have Legion teams, and VFW teams, and junior teams. And I think as we had the discussion, it was more about the youth and secondhand smoke issues versus a person's right to smoke. They can walk over to a boulevard or step on a side street and smoke away. I mean, nobody was trying to take away anybody's opportunity to smoke, other than in a certain area. And all they needed to do is walk about a half a block, and they'd be able to smoke them if they got them.
Well, for clarification, are you guys talking about the baseball field, or are you talking about where they have the tank?
Veterans Park.
Veterans Park, and honestly, it's any of our parks, 'cause this is all parks.
Yep. Right, but where, what parks are you advocating that you should be able to smoke in? Like the, were you advocating that they can smoke down by the baseball field, or advocating that they can smoke down by the army tank?
Either one. But like you said.
But then you can smoke in the campground, and Roberts, and I'm fishing, I'm gonna smoke in Girl Scout Park. I mean, that's the dilemma that the Parks Rec Community and Advisory Board faces, is you, you want to be sensitive to individual freedoms, but you also need to be sensitive to the needs of the park utilizers as well. And when, you know, we all know that smoking has some consequences. Most of them aren't positive. Um, and I think the conversation was, how do we protect the people that don't smoke? 'Cause they can't get up and go move the game a block away, but the smoker can move a block away. And, and wherever the council goes on it, I guess we just need to be consistent. And these are, as you say, enforceable issues. Now, we might not have a lot of enforcement concerning that, 'cause there's a lot of things, you know, to enforce, so.
I was gonna just interject, I think this stems back to the question that was raised. Last time we read this ordinance was why was.
Why was it just Tartan Park?
Why was it just Tartan Park, because, and some of you were potentially here. Think these were some of the same concerns that were raised at the time. Now, was again, just trying to address a request that came from the council at that time, so, or council back in, in November. You know, I, I will say for enforcement, it becomes a problem too, when you pick and choose which parks. My recommendation would be either all or nothing. If, if, if you go the route, just because I think it starts to get, becomes one more layer of, okay, well, these three parks, it's okay, these two aren't, this one is, it's just.
Is the dog park considered a city park?
Yes, it is.
Have you ever been by there when you saw someone smoking in it, when they got their dogs out there?
I've seen someone smoke in all the parks.
And that, and I guess that's where I come from, the, uh, enforceable part, is that, that is one of the requirements in the dog park, is not to smoke in the dog park when there are other dogs and/or people and whatever in there. And I have seen either both, or whatever the case is. So if we can't enforce it in the dog park, how we'd enforce it in a city park, uh, from that perspective? Now, it's, it's, what Mr. Moon is saying is, is that, yes, we can, we can move off. I'm not a smoker either, but we can move off to the side and do that. But then, if they're gonna move off to the side to have a cigarette and can't see the game, then how does, you know, it works both, both directions, and I, and I see that. But with a non-enforceable law, uh, or ordinance, or whatever you may want to call it, is, is, uh, doesn't make any sense to me to have that. People, I think, are getting more and more sensitive to non-smokers. And yes, there are a few, uh, that could care less who's standing next to them, or where they throw their cigarette butts. And as you well probably know, most of you know that I work out of American, and any given day, you could probably pick up, uh, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty cigarette butts off the, off of the street. We have receptacles for them to put them in there, and they stand right beside the receptacle and do this. Well, you know, that's not, doesn't take a real brainy person to do that, as far as I'm concerned. And, and they, I chastise them every time that I can, when I catch them doing it. Problem of it is, is I can't do anything to enforce it, I can just chastise them, if I irritate them, they won't come back, if I.
One of the, one of the positives from the ordinance enactment, uh, enacting was, at Roberts Park, it was a real problem. And now we don't have those cigarette butts, because people, they honor that. And, and it enforces itself because people, there's an expectation now, when you go to Roberts Park, that there's no smoking. Now, I'm not saying tobacco doesn't get used there, 'cause there's, you know, different tobacco products that get utilized. But from a maintenance perspective, it's been a joy for our maintenance staff, 'cause they don't have to go pick that up. And then when you had little toddlers out there, and they're rummaging around in the, in the facility, and little kids like to stick things in their mouths, and those cigarette butts were not the most pleasurable items in the park.
We're not asking for any votes, I'm just trying to look for, to the language to bring forth. I mean, and maybe it's, if we could, maybe just for a second, what about the other changes that have been proposed to the ordinance?
Other ones, uh, cover what we've talked about well, so. That's the loose line trail and the sidewalk within Library Square, uh, for traversing purposes. And then, uh, let's see, city designated sidewalks, public trails not located within a park, are open for twenty-four hour use too.
Yeah, 'cause I think, I know there was a little bit of concern, we do have some parks that have trails within them, that I think the park sport's still kind of, you know, if it's one in the morning, there's really not necessarily a reason, you know, and with, obviously to help with some enforcement requirements as well, so. And so, obviously, there, there's one item on here that, that has some concern. Um, and so there's, you know, I can, we can present it as is for a vote. I can come forth with two different language options for that one section, for you guys to act on. Um, obviously, that's up for more discussion and debate, so.
Well, I feel strongly that the, the baseball field should stay smoke-free. I mean, that's mostly a youth-oriented place. I mean, the, the only place I can see making any sense at all is like down by, is it called the McLeod County Veterans Park? So, because that's not a youth-oriented park, not that there aren't kids there, but it, kids aren't drawn there by a playground or a ball field. But I don't think you need to sit there and have a smoke when there's kids everywhere at the baseball field, in my opinion.
Riverside, uh, same way. A lot of our other parks have the playgrounds, they're really for families more, so.
Well, the campgrounds too, if there's people camping, sitting around the campfire, they, you know. But, yeah, I, I kind of agree with Dave, but I think some of the, I think if, if there's the, most smokers, they're considerate if there, you know, a lot of people around, usually they won't fire up, but there are a few that do anyway. But, you know, it's, uh, I mean, it's kind of a hard thing to enforce, but, uh.
Well, I mean, using that logic though, I mean, you wouldn't enforce speed limits, 'cause people still speed, even though it's hard to enforce. I mean, every law is hard to enforce when you have three cops on the road and during the day. You know, I mean, stuff happens all day, every day. You know, our whole nuisance ordinance really only gets enforced when it's an issue, you know. I mean, the thing's eight hundred pages long, and we don't really enforce it until there's an issue. So I, I think to use that as the basis of not having it, just 'cause somebody smokes at the dog park, well, they shouldn't, you know, I mean, it's.
I mean, we, they actually have, if we would adopt this, that one organization actually has free signs available, and it would make, be a lot more visible than probably what's posted on, on, uh, that sign with the rules that are at the dog park. You know, so that's just an example how visibility and maybe some self-enforcement comes through with that too.
Like I said, um, there'll be a draft that comes forward for the council to consider, and you guys have some, like I said, it's, obviously requires.
Well, I certainly, uh, I certainly don't have a problem if you're at a, an event, like Memorial Day services at Veterans Park, and whoever is sponsoring that, whether it's the Elks or the VFW, and they would ask the audience to be courteous enough not to smoke, you know, with the number of elderly people that are there usually. Uh, I think it was last year, if I'm not mistaken, they burned flags, uh, disposed of flags, and there was smoke coming out of the chimney. Fortunately, the wind was in the right direction, so it didn't blow it over the top of the crowd. But on the other hand, uh, so, again, I think you can be asked not to do something. If someone's courteous enough, courteous enough to, uh, uh, grant that wish, then, uh, you know, then I see that. As far as, uh, mandating that, I, uh, I can see the kids, don't get me wrong, I do see that. Uh, in an open space where there are veterans that come to, uh, to memorialize their losses, or themselves, or reflect on, uh, their lives, uh, I can't see doing that as a, uh, I don't see it doing in the veterans' park.
Sorry, you guys fine with it being smoke-free outside of the McLeod County Veterans Park?
You want to answer that? I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with that too. I just think Veterans Park should be, if they want to have a cigarette in there, they certainly can.
'Cause I would be fine with that.
And I'm talking to a memorial park.
The McLeod County Veterans Park.
Yes.
Everything else smoke-free.
I'm okay with that.
That's what I want to hear, Mary.
Does that help, Matt?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, but I guess what I'll, what I'll do for the council based off of this conversation, unless you guys tell me different, I can provide, obviously, the updated ordinance, and I can provide a couple of different options. Basically, consider for section ninety-five point eight, I think one with how it's written now. One, simply with, uh, you know, even, I guess, memorial.
McLeod.
The memorial, Veterans Memorial Park, um, out of it. Unless, unless, unless the five of you today tell me, go with one version, then.
No, we're not supposed to vote, right?
I mean, I think that just based off of the conversation, that's what I'll do based off of this tonight, and then that will be part of the debate when the ordinance comes forward.
Since we're having an exception now, I was wondering, you know, what I read in several different examples of ones that I looked at, was that there was an exception for Native Americans for ceremonial uses. And so I was wondering about, uh, including something like that. I think I sent Matt and Dolph some language, and I guess one example I can think of, and I, I've never witnessed it, so I don't know, but every year, there's, uh, some of the Dakota, uh, people come and to Little Crow and leave, um, have a little ceremony there. And I don't know if they smoke as part of that, but, uh, I wouldn't be surprised, I guess, but I don't know. But at the same time, why not enable that if people are okay with that?
I have seen them come into town.
Yeah.
But, I, you know, I haven't gone to the ceremony.
Well, if anyone can remember, there was a, a request on Facebook for, uh, a child had passed away in his twenty-eighth day, and the, uh,
Yes.
And the lady that was requesting the, uh, the wood to burn for four days, uh, uh, I don't know where she was going to burn that at, but I assumed it was in the city limits. And if, if she did do that, it was to memorialize that child and, uh, into the, whatever their beliefs are. But, uh, so typically, I guess, I'm not sure it happened.
Yeah.
I know she had, got a lot of responses as far as wood was concerned, so maybe it did happen.
Bet she didn't do it in a park, though.
No.
Yeah.
Probably not.
But so that other, having something for Native American.
Yeah, I include that in, in the one option, so.
Larry.
Thank you.
New business, two thousand nineteen City of Hutchinson legislative priority.
Um, Mayor and Council, this is, um, obviously very similar to what we did in two thousand and eighteen. Um, I, I've kept actually all of what we did in two thousand and eighteen. I couldn't have any of that, um, approved. I've, I've highlighted, uh, the areas in red that would be changes or additions to it, based off of a conversation that we had, um, at our last meeting. Once again, we simply use this as, if you want to say, more of a statement to our elected officials. You know, expressing, I guess, our viewpoint on a couple of different, uh, issues or laws that may have an impact on, on the, the City of Hutchinson. And so, I'm looking for feedback if I'm missing anything, or, um, if you've got any concerns, anything that's been, been laid out there for legislative priorities, um, and if there's not, or if you're looking to approve something, I would ask you to consider that tonight, and then we'll have this document that would be available, for our legislatures, and as you head to the Capitol and back. And I know last year, we even sent it directly to our legislatures after adoption.
Thought, Matt, um, I like everything that got included, and, um, but I would assume you'd be emailing this or sending. but I would assume you'd be emailing this or sending a cover letter of some kind. And I, I thought maybe it would be helpful to highlight a couple, maybe in that cover letter. And the ones I thought about were the local control, um, LGA, uh, the beer and wine, and the water, um, environmental ones, the water quality regulations, and then also, so, um, the river basin that we talked about, something new, as well as that permitting for the wastewater plants. Didn't want to have that many, but at the same time, those are big ones for us, so... And I thought maybe just in the cover letter that way, or the email, that's a way to draw attention to those a little bit. Especially those environment ones that are at the end, so I want to make sure...
Well, a lot of those are having, you know, potential to have a major impact on, on Hutchinson, especially the, the permanent one, you know, we just, not that long ago, we added to our plants, and we're still paying out the debts, and we're being...
Well, and I hope they latch on to that because the law that they passed last year exempted, uh, new plant construction going forward, but what about the communities like us that are already dealing with it?
Yeah, I would say at least, I know one of them, especially the public safety, and we, we have one of our local representatives actually, you know, so at the very least, it's us supportive of him going forward with that, so...
Unfortunately, the penalties have gotten very watered down from what it started out. Because then, wasn't there a representative from like Mound or somewhere in the West Metro that rolled it out? And it's supposed to be like a DUI initially? But now it's down to like two hundred bucks or something for your first offense, but...
Matt, in Section F of that, um, I think there's a typo error in there.
It's possible, I do that every great now and then.
Controlling the sale of alcohol to minimize the risks associated with you, and I think it's supposed to be youth. I think we should put youth in there.
Yep, you caught me, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think those, and, you know, I had Matt there, whoever else did it too, about the e-cigarettes.
Yeah.
I think that's, uh, it's coming up to a big thing, and, um, uh, did you type out the strike today? Was it?
I just did, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I think they said something was going on today, wasn't it? That that was brought up?
For cellphone use, yeah.
Yeah. I heard that on the news out there. Yeah, because that, that, uh, the penalty for that is minute compared to...
If you're comfortable with it, I would ask you to consider just officially, I guess, approving those priorities.
I'd make a motion to approve it with the typos fixed.
Thanks, Chad.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, Carrie. Uh, seeking bids for compost turner at Creekside. Now that you softened us up, now you can really go for it, Mary.
Just soften up.
Um, as mentioned here earlier, we are intending to replace our compost turner at Creekside here this year. Uh, the, the current machine we have is, obviously plays a primary, primary role in the operations out there. It's, uh, certainly seen its better days, it's, it's tired. Um, we've been on the, the schedule of every three to four years, basically planning fifty, forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of preventive maintenance to this machine, and it's just, it's getting to the point that, you know, we might as well invest this money into a new machine.
It's original to the plan?
What's that?
It's original to the plan, so is it two thousand one, two thousand two?
Two thousand four is when this, is the year of this machine. So, um, the style of machine we have, I believe, is discontinued or, um, in the process of being discontinued, so we're actually going to be looking at a different style of machine going back to, uh, the original straddle type, which has significantly less moving parts, um, higher production rates than the machine we have. So, um, I'm basically just here to, to seek approval to, to go out for bids and see what we come up with.
How many, how many hours are they usually slated for before?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I don't know that answer.
Yeah.
Um, our style of machine currently has approximately fifty-two hundred hours on it, so doing that backwards, you know, four hundred and fifty hours a year, but there's a lot of iron in moving dirt, or do, you know, a lot of iron that is moving dirt, and it's just very abrasive, wears it out. Honestly, I, I don't know what the, the anticipated expect, expected useful life is. That's something we can certainly find out and bring back, you know, as we come for purchase approval.
A lot of hours, it's tired.
Yeah. And in, in the grand scheme of things, fifty-two hundred isn't a lot in terms of equipment, but just the nature of the beast with this one.
The environment, it's working.
Right, looking at the grinder, we replaced the grinder in twenty seventeen, if I recall correctly. That had fifty-six, fifty-seven hundred hours on it, so, um, the composting industry is, it's, it's tough on equipment. Things are getting better, the technology and using more AR steel, abrasion-resistant steel, has, has come a long ways. But, uh, yeah, this particular unit is, it's pooped.
And maintenance costs are going up, that's why, what's really driving it?
Downtime. And actually, just here last week, the machine went down, it's the second time. And I don't need to get into detail on it, but it's just the, the routine downtime. And the, the other big component is we've had a couple of demos of the, of these newer machines, and we've looked at it from different angles, too. We've looked at it of just doing away with a compost turner and turn with wheel loader, to scoop up the stuff and dump it, scoop and dump. Um, we took, obviously, the production rates on that, we have a production rate on our current machine, and the new machines, you know, I'll try to hopefully make sense of this, but if we were to turn with a wheel loader, we'd do like three hundred yards an hour, and that's, that was from a small snapshot of an hour's worth of running back and forth. To try to do that over a day's time, that operator's going to be sore. Our current, current turner does a thousand yards an hour, give or take. What we've seen in these demos is anywhere from three to four thousand yards an hour. So, you know, from, from a production cost standpoint, we should see that cost drive down. However, it could work against this because now you potentially could be putting less hours on the machine, driving up your, your operating cost in terms of depreciation, so that's just the nature of the beast. The biggest thing is time, that's the name of the game for us.
Depreciation is a soft cost, too, right?
True, it is, right.
It'll just last that much longer?
Hopefully. Yeah, we would slate that for a fifteen-year expected life, so to answer your question, I don't know what...
Yeah, and I would assume when we go out for, if we go out for bids, I, I would assume you're going to get some of that feedback from those vendors of what the expected life is, like we deal with.
Right.
Make a motion to approve going out for bids?
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to seek bids for compost turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie?
Thank you.
Next, Andy. Uh, seeking price quotations for campground sewer project.
Mayor and Council, uh, included, uh, in your packet is a request to go out for, uh, soliciting quotations for a campground sewer project. Uh, as we were beginning to shut down last fall, we noted that eight of our twelve full hookup sites were experiencing some leakage, uh, that needs to be repaired. Uh, we've had some conversations involving John Olson with Public Works, Sarah Witty, our park supervisor, Matt, Andy, and myself to see what the best approach might be to, uh, to fix the situation. Uh, part of our conversation then centered around, uh, some feedback that we've always received from the elected officials, that wouldn't it be nice someday if we could expand our campground? Um, so with that in mind, uh, the proposal that's outlined would indeed facilitate some expansion to the campground. In the near term, we'd look at, uh, adding two sites, and then in the longer term, uh, there could be some contemplation about adding an additional ten full hookups at that site. The other piece of the seeking a quotation is the, is those come in to have some conversations of how we might, uh, skinny the number down a little bit by having park maintenance staff and/or public works do some of the restoration work, uh, the grass seeding, hauling in, uh, of materials, to, uh, make that number as low as, as possible. Uh, we did include at least an initial estimate, uh, so that there hopefully won't be sticker shock when we see those numbers. Uh, but if we leave, leave the problem alone, or just handle it one site at a time, we just think that's the wrong approach on this, that a more comprehensive approach would be to just rerun that line, uh, be able to have that future flexibility, uh, for expansion. Um, and then obviously, it would, uh, come back once we know what the number might be. Any questions?
Is the problem the main line, or just the service?
Uh, there's several, it's the connector piece, and we suspect that there's some main line issues as well. A lot, a lot of that piping's been in the ground since the early eighties, um, nineteen, not eighteen, but...
Back when you started.
It's, yeah, it's right started. But we just think this is a, you know, to prevent some future, future problems, that this would be a more comprehensive, uh, repair.
Well, it definitely gives us the opportunity for the expansion, that's the other big piece, and...
And, and having some, uh, discussion with staff, the two, uh, sites that could be added immediately could help soften the cushion because they'd be, uh, immediately for resale at thirty dollars, uh, a site. Uh, but we'd look to make those two sites fully handicap accessible, so we'd have a bigger bit con pad. Uh, there'd be, uh, uh, a table designed for wheelchair-bound individuals. Um, and we just think that would be a nice option to, uh, offer future customers.
And Dolph, I mean, I think it's safe to say that the demand is continuing to increase for the usage of that.
Yeah, we're in our third year in a row of, uh, mid-fifties for, uh, receipts for the season. And not too long ago, we were in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range, and it's significantly increased, um...
You already got, how many are signed up for this year?
Yeah, we've already done about eight thousand dollars worth of business, and, you know, there's still a lot of snow on the ground. Our hope is that we'd be able to do this early spring, so we wouldn't lose dates, but we said that they'll become available on May twentieth. If the work gets done earlier, they'll become available the first week of May, just like the balance of the campgrounds. But we thought it'd be, you know, it's just much easier to open early than to delay, uh, or have another delay, so...
And just paying for it, it's capital?
The Capital Projects Fund?
Yeah.
I, and I think the nice thing about it is you can recoup the expenditures, you know? We're hearing a lot of conversations about that, uh, you know? These are things that are going to resell and resell and resell, and if we stay in the mid-fifties, if we add two stalls and we rent them, uh, a hundred nights a summer, that's an additional six thousand in revenue, which would get us over the sixty thousand threshold. And, you know, people like the park, um, and I think, you know, with the trail paving that's occurred, we just see more and more family use and bicycle users, um, so it's been good.
Do you need anything for a contingency fund, Dolph?
Uh, I think, John, uh...
Got that in there.
The conversations we had, we felt pretty comfortable with showing this as an estimate. Of course, once we get the quotations, I mean, it's, you know, hard to say, but we feel pretty good about that. We also feel that, uh, working with our local contractors, there's really an opportunity to have us assist where we can assist, which might be that restoration piece, uh, but we want to see what their cost is, uh, instead of just jumping right into it, and if we have to whittle down the number, that's how we do it.
And I would say, Dave, we're not necessarily asking for the dollar amount right now. So, we're just asking to go out for bids so that you'll have a...
Well, I was just wondering if we should cap it if we're going to vote on it, so that would...
And that will be, I would say, you, you'll have the opportunity, if, if that's a desire of yours, to do that once you get your bids in, because that'll give you a better idea what those prices would be.
This seventy-eight, that's for the...
That's all, that's everything.
That's all in.
Because it said, "A bid alternate," that's what I wasn't sure, you know, on the stems that go to the, the expansion. Would they be put in, or that's an alternate?
No, oh, yes, they will be put in.
As part of this project, now?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, that's an area we could say, "Yeah, it could come later."
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, so we left ourselves, I think, a lot of, lot of room to get the number lower, um, so...
If we did, went through the whole expansion, do you run into an issue requiring another bathroom? Like, because in the campgrounds, don't you have to have X amount of bathroom stalls?
Uh, yes, you do, but they can be accomplished in, in one way. You can have mini biffs, um, as an alternative. Uh, the other piece is with the, uh, comprehensive, uh, Park Master Plan that's happening. Uh, we've talked even further that, uh, once that's done, that may shed some light on some direction, and then maybe that entire site might need its own planning process, which would identify what facilities, you know, might be best utilized. So, you, you do your big Park Master Plan, then you might narrow it down to say, "We specifically want to look at Masonic West River Park." Because there are, you know, some of the equipment there is getting a little dated, uh, use is up, shelter use is up, and we may want to take a look at, you know, what, what other projects we may want to try to accomplish out there.
It's a busy park.
It is very busy.
And, and we all know that those campsites are filled all the time, so this will be a good...
So, this is just to get a quotation, and we come back and let you know, and before we move forward.
I make a motion to, uh, approve this.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Steve to approve seeking prices for the campground sewer project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Uh, setting public meeting for Park Master Plan, open house on January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, at the Hutchinson Event Center from five till seven P.M.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the, obviously, the Master Park Plan is having an open house. I would encourage you all to attend that. Um, there will be a follow-up workshop after this, this open house, just with the city council, but with the, the probability that you'll have a quorum there, and so I'd ask for you guys to consider setting that as a meeting.
Make a motion to set that?
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave to set that as a meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie? Uh, setting closed council workshop on February twelfth, two thousand nineteen at four P.M. The developer consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of reala, real estate or personal property pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five, sub D point three C.
Yep. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is actually, I would say, be more of a follow-up to our facility study regarding the police station. During that, uh, workshop, we will be discussing some potential sites that we may be asking you guys to consider to pursue for a purchase. That's, that's the reason why we're asking you guys to go, go in a closed session. Those sounds, those sites would be announced, obviously, before you actually go in a closed session per, um, statute for that. So, we'll have that for the next meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve the closed workshop on February twelfth.
Well, second.
Motion by Mary, second by Steve to have the closed workshop for February twelfth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie? Uh, governance, we have, uh, Planning Commission minutes from November twentieth, two thousand eighteen. The Public Arts Commission minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Should be eighteen yet, huh?
Yes. Yes.
City of Hutchinson Financial Report Investment Reports for December 2018. Tim, you have anything for us?
No, I just gave in support of any questions that might be on my project, but I think the answer goes, and I'm proud to bring those projects forward that.
Very.
We have an ROI in, only like two, two years, and that's some, some real hard dollar savings. So, just, just more of the work that myself and staff at the wastewater plant are continuing to do to look for opportunities and optimization, and ever-increasing times when we're asked to make our excellent water back to the river even more excellent, so. You know, any, anytime we can save money on energy, that's a big expense for wastewater and water plants and cities.
You remind, I mean, you estimated it'd be about $6,500, $67 a month?
Yeah, those are kind of, we did a little trial, and that's what we saw, just shutting a 200 horsepower blower and running the, the other 50 horsepowerers in its place. So, we asked soft numbers, $5,000 a month or, or more, but, yeah, at that, with a $120,000 or $10,000 project, two years will pay for it, then we'll realize $60,000, hopefully, in energy savings a year.
Big one.
Amazing.
Thanks, Tim. Andy, anything else? Dolph?
Nope.
Hurt?
Nothing tonight.
Dave, it's Dave with you tonight.
Talking to me?
Yes, sir.
They're David.
I guess what I say is, it's really interesting, been in a couple of commissions, already going to another one tomorrow night. They are very involved in the city and have a lot of good information, so I'm really, I'm very pleased that I got to sit on those, and that's the Planning Commission, the Joint Planning Commission, and one never knows how much work goes into a project, and it's nice, it's good, it's a good learning experience, so.
Dave, don't you know everybody thinks we just flip a coin and figure this out?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I see what you're getting at, yeah. Otherwise, I don't have anything. I think the little bit of snow, getting it slippery out there, so I'd warn everybody to be a little bit cautious. Was out at Menards the other day, and a guy fell right in front of the front door when we had that snow, and I asked him if he'd gotten hurt, and he said, no, I'm not hurt, just maybe my pride, well, I said, that doesn't have anything to do with your health, so you'll be all right.
Thanks, Dave. Steve?
Just a couple things, just a reminder, the community book read, took that home after the last meeting, went to the grocery store, came home, and Kay was reading it already. And, so we shared it and got through it in a week. It's really, like Mary said, it's a book, once you start reading it, it's hard to put down, so, pretty interesting. And it's actually a series, he's got five books that now kind of build off things with the same people, characters. The pillar project, the public comment period goes through till January 31st. There's papers down here at City Hall over by the counter, but then you can also go to the Hutchinson Public Arts website for information, and it's HutchinsonPublicArts.com, all one word. And then, just an update, the sculpture stroll, we're taking submissions for that through the end of the month, and we've got some really nice pieces so far, so, we'll see where that goes, so, that's it.
Thanks, Steve. Chad?
I don't have anything else.
Mary?
Nothing, except we're still working on the plat, right? All right, thank you.
Just a couple things. We've got, I sent everyone an email, but we do have three finalists for, semi-finalists, we have everyone call them for the police chief position, so we'll be doing interviews next week on that. Obviously, just a reminder with the master park plan, I know there's been a lot of great feedback for that, so I'd encourage all of you to, to go to that if you can. I know a part of our workshop, we're scheduling a workshop probably for our second meeting in February to kind of get an update on this, but some of what is shared at that open house is what will be a part of the workshop, along with some of the other stuff that they've, they've done to date. And then I know some of you are going to conferences at the end of the month, so, just a reminder on that, so, that's it for me.
And I have nothing else, so, chairman's in order.
No.
No, we can't, that's right. I tried to, I tried to get us out of here.
Have pity yourself.
Not gonna work.
Not gonna work. Alrighty, next I need them on the agenda is the closed session to conduct the performance review of City Administrator Matt Yonik under Minnesota Statute 13D .05, subdivision 3A. Matt, as you know, under Minnesota law, you have the right to either have this portion of the meeting opened or closed, so before we go any further, I need to let us know whether you want to have the meeting closed or not.
I prefer to have it closed.
Thank you. Now, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to conduct annual performance review for City Administrator Matt Yonik.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to go into closed session to conduct Matt Yonik annual interview. All in favor, signify by c and aye.
Did Matt ask for that? I was looking at something.
He said he wanted it closed.
Okay, just want to make sure, so, okay.
All in favor, signify by c and aye.
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 C and A.